Okay, we'll call it a order tonight's January 25, 2017 Planning and Zoning Special Meeting, and the first item on our agenda is the roll call.
Commissioner Height.
President.
Commissioner Teta.
President.
Commissioner Polan.
Here.
Commissioner Shernick.
Here.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Here.
Commissioner Flague.
Here.
Commissioner Bruno.
Here.
Councilmember Finley.
Here.
Okay, so next on our agenda is Communications from Principal Planner Don Berchett.
We have none.
Okay, thank you. Next is, this is a public meeting, and we have a Public Invited to be Heard section. If somebody would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda, we'd welcome having you come forward to the podium and give you five minutes to talk, but it needs to be something that's not on the agenda tonight. Jane's gonna check to see if anybody has signed up. Just so you know, for the folks in the audience, the way it works is that we give you five minutes, you get a green light, then at one minute left, you get a yellow light, and then I will cut you off when the light turns red. And we always start with your name and address. Anybody signed up? Nobody signed up? Anybody want to come forward? Nope? We're all clear. We'll close the Public Invited to be Heard. And next is Item 5, Fall River Apartments Preliminary and Final PUD Development Plan Height Exception and Landscape Buffer Variance with Planner Ben Ortiz.
Chairman Shernick, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, good evening. My name is Ben Ortiz, Planner, Development Services. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission. I realize you spent the last hour diving into a rather heavy topic, and then you've given up an additional night for helping out the two applicants for projects this evening, so thank you very much. The project for under consideration is the Fall River Apartments. It is the preliminary and final PUD development plan, height exception, and landscape buffer variance. The project is located at Block 8 of Prairie Village, filing 2. And if you will follow my finger here, if I can, there we go. So we have Highway 66 up here, and then Alpine Street comes down here, and then continues south. And then we have 21st Avenue down here. And then Homestead Parkway, it is, comes down the spine of, central spine of the neighborhood, with Canadian Crossing on the southern end of the development, Step Drive on the northern end of the development. The zoning for this property is mixed-use plan unit development, PUDMU. The Longmont area comprehensive plan envisioned Longmont land use designation as multi-family neighborhood. Primary uses in the multi-family neighborhood include a mix of higher-density housing types, including apartment buildings, condominiums, townhomes, triplexes, and duplexes. The property size is 1.979 acres. The development includes a 15,655-square-foot, four-story apartment complex to include 60 age-restricted units. 60 parking spaces are provided, which is consistent with the Land Development Code, requiring a minimum of one parking space per unit for age-restricted or permanently affordable housing. Part of this application includes a height exception. The maximum structure height for this neighborhood is 40 feet, and the applicant is requesting a 2-foot, 10 1/8-inch height exception for a total building height of 42 feet, 10 1/8 inches. Their reasoning for requesting the increased height is that it enables them to step the building back 30 additional feet from the properties to the north than if they had gone with the shorter three-story option. And this slide shows the four-story option versus the three-story option. With the four-story option, the applicant would be able to achieve 163 feet of separation between the apartment building and the single-family residences to the north. With the three-story option, the apartment building would be 131 feet from the properties to the north. The applicant conducted a shade shadow analysis on December 21st, which is the shortest day of the year, and one was done at 10:00 a.m. and the other at 2:00 p.m. And so at no time do the shadows reach the far side of Step Drive and the properties to the north. With a four-story option, the requested height exception, increased separation from the residences to the north is achieved, along with more landscaping on the north side of the property. So if you look at the shade shadow analysis on your right, you can see that the shadows have already moved substantially away from the single-family development to the north.
Ben, can you go back one slide just a second?
Yes, absolutely. Sorry.
Thanks, I don't have a question, I just wanted to take you in another second.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
All right, thanks. A 20-foot landscape buffer is required adjacent to Step Drive. Step Drive is up here. The applicant is proposing a 14-foot landscape buffer in the buffer east of the north entrance, this is the north entrance here, off of Step Drive, and this is the 14-foot landscape buffer. And then they are also proposing a 7-foot buffer on the west side of the entrance. And so what they're requesting is a 13-foot landscape buffer variance. Staff explored several options with the applicant to increase the width of the buffers, and I just have to say, they were very cooperative with staff in trying to find a solution to these buffer issues. One of them was to slide the parking on this side, on the west side of the drive aisle south, and then they would encroach into utilizing some of this landscape buffer in We disregarded that option because it would have, would cause a car parked in that southernmost parking space to encroach into the drive aisle, and we just didn't feel that was a safe option. The other was removing the landscaping on the south side of the parking here, adjacent to the building, and then increasing the width of the perimeter buffer here. And that was problematic due to differences in grades between the building and parking lot, and the changes that we suggested would have adversely impacted ADA accessibility as well as drainage, so we chose not to go with that option. So staff does support this variance request for a number of reasons. Chief among these is that, and I do need to note this, the bar for granting variances for projects in the PUDMU's is significantly lower than in straight zoning. So they don't need to meet the traditional variance review criteria, and so that full analysis of the review criteria is included in your communication. They also added far more landscaping here on the north side of the building than required 20 feet. They provided as much as 50 feet and 60 feet of landscape buffer along this whole side of the development. So that, we felt, was a mitigating circumstance for those two landscape buffer variances that they were requesting. And lastly, they cannot reduce parking in order to increase the buffer size, because they would not meet their minimum parking requirement if they did that. So we did not even entertain that option. So this is the final project, product, which I believe there is a paper version before you on the floor. So the Planning and Zoning Commission options for this project are approve the PUD development plan, 2-foot, 10 1/8-inch height exception, and 13-foot landscape buffer variance without conditions, as reflected in PZR 2017-9A; approve the PUD development plan, 2-foot, 10 1/8-inch height exception, and 13-foot landscape buffer variance with conditions, as reflected in PZR 2017-9B; or deny the PUD development plan, 2-foot, 10 1/8-inch height exception, and 13-foot landscape buffer, as reflected in PZR 2017-9C. And staff recommends approving the PUD development plan, 2-foot, 10 1/8-inch height exception, and 13-foot landscape buffer variance with conditions, as reflected in PZR 2017-9B, with the following conditions: applicant agrees to make all remaining staff requested corrections to the plans, and the applicant agrees to provide a dense thicket of shrubs along the northern landscape buffer to the satisfaction of the city for purposes of providing adequate screening of parking lot headlights. And we have communicated with the applicant on this second condition, and that is something that they agree to. With that, I'd be happy to take questions.
Any clarification questions for Planner Ortiz?
Of course I do. But as a, as an issue matter, I need to disclose that the original...
Jane, well, Jane, I'll let you.
Am I not on?
Now do it. Turn it back on.
Not at all.
There you go.
You're on. Am I? I'm on. The original developer of Prairie Village was a client of mine. I did not work on Prairie Village, and I do not have any financial relationship to Prairie Village, but I do believe that I need to make that disclosure. If anybody would like to ask me more about that, I'm happy to discuss it. The applicant, possibly. Okay. But as a made, Ben, Planner Ortiz, I have a question concerning the standards for the landscape buffer. It's indicated that it's a variance that's required. I can't find, when I look at a PUD and the standards by which it is to be, I guess, critiqued, the underlying MU district, which is what I guess this PUD is, the PUDMU, the underlying standards of the MU district, I think, apply, and as I read the landscape buffer standards, they could be zero, they could be between 25 and 20. What I couldn't figure out is what exact standards are we measuring this project against for the 25-foot buffer that they're, or the 20-foot buffer they're seeking a variance from?
Commissioner Height, let me pull up the section. So in our landscaping standards, which is located in 1505-040, we do find a table, PUDR and UDMU zone developments for...
2040.
Missed that. Oh, did I, oh, did I miss this?
Let's pick this up. Oh, no, that's the first one. Oh, okay.
I can get the wrong section, I apologize. Nerves. Okay. So for PUD subdivisions, the required landscape buffer is located in 15.05- C of the Land Development Code. And basically, it is in reference to specific type of street classification. So you have arterials, non arterials, primary greenways, detached single-family dwellings, other residential uses. And across the board, they require a 20-foot landscape buffer. So that would be in 1505- C, so that establishes the width of the landscape buffer.
1505-C?
It's Table 1505- C, required landscape buffers.
Okay. And it's 20 feet across the board?
It is 20 feet across the board. And that's the very top, that is the very, very top use within that table.
I'm gonna get there, thanks. Appreciate you clarifying that.
Oh, sure. No problem.
Commissioner Height, do you have a follow-on?
I do not right now.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Flague?
Ben, is there not a like or similar building across the street from this one, this proposed building?
Commissioner Flague, yes, that's correct. That would be the Spring Creek Apartments. It also, too, is a senior, senior living apartments. They're age-restricted, 55 and over. It, too, has 60 units. That building is three stories, but it is of comparable height.
You mean it's, it would be similarly, that building already in existence is going to be how much shorter than the one proposed?
That particular building, I believe, is 40 feet. Not including the elevator shafts and other pertinences above the top of the roof.
Commissioner Bruno?
Ben, the houses that are right abutting this subject area, when were they built?
I don't have the exact date. I know that, I believe that the preliminary PUD development plan was approved in 2002. Is that somewhere around there? And I think these, I don't know the exact date, but it's been several years. So they've been, they've been in the ground for a number of years now.
Commissioner Polan?
So Ben, at the same time that those houses were being planned, it was also planned that there would be these senior apartments in the same area?
Commissioner Polan, that is correct. The concept plan for the Pepler neighborhood shows that those particular twin parcels, the one on which Spring Creek Apartments is situated, as well as the proposed Fall River Apartments, were designated to be high-density senior apartments or condominiums, whether it was one or the other. And so it is in, it is consistent with the prior approved concept plan.
Commissioner Teta?
I'm not sure I understood. Is this part of the same project, the second of two, or a second of more than two, or a separate project, or?
Commissioner Teta, so if you were to look at this particular project and look at the shape of it, and the one immediately adjacent, they look, for all intents and purposes, like twins. They are both owned by the Longmont Housing Development Corporation. They were both intended to be senior apartments, and so I guess, for all intents and purposes, you could say that they are part of the same project?
Ben, do we have a presentation from the applicant?
They are here, and they're willing to speak and ask, and answer your questions, but I don't believe that they have an actual PowerPoint.
Okay. All right. Do we have clarifying questions, not discussion quite yet, for the applicant, that only the applicant can answer? Otherwise, we'll go to the public hearing part. Thank you, Ben. Seeing no further questions from the commission, we'll go to the public hearing section of this. Nobody signed up outside. This is a public hearing item, and so we will invite people in the audience, if they so wish, to come down and speak their mind about this. If you do so, please step up, state your name and address, and we'll give you five There's a button in the middle of that white base, just press that until you get a red light. There you go. Perfect.
My name is Arlen Dorman. I reside at 304 Homestead Parkway. I've been a resident of Longmont since May of 2013. I am also Vice President of our HOA, which includes 204 homes in the subdivision, and we appreciated the applicant meeting on multiple times with membership of the HOA, and they personally arranged to have all of the homes that were built on Step, which is right across from this project, meet at the construction trailer that they had going on for Spring Creek, so that the residents could give opinions regarding the three-story plan, which had the bigger footprint, or the one that was being suggested as an alternative with a little bit higher height, but less of an imposition on their properties. We think the landscape buffer that they're proposing is also very acceptable to the homeowners, because they are separated more under this application option than they would have if they had been under the three-story plan. So they've moved the building back from the homeowners on Step. But we appreciate your hearing the applicant's request, and we have written a letter previously in support of the project. And I will mention that the Spring Creek senior apartments, which have been completed and are now 100% occupied, have not affected any of the traffic in our neighborhood, and we have really good neighbors in those apartments. We meet them all the time when we're out walking, and I know they're very appreciative of having their new home in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward and speak? Okay. Seeing nobody else coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. We'll go back to discussion, questions, and thoughts, and permutations by the commission. Commissioner Teta?
I, I'm not sure I understand exactly how the footprint changed going from the three-story to the four-story. It seems like the distance is now greater from the homes to the north on Step with the four-story plan, and yet the landscape buffer is something we need a variance for to go from 20 down to 14, or isn't that the same, is that the same direction that we're talking about, or not?
Commissioner Teta, so that, there's a, as I noted in my presentation, there's somewhat of a grade change right at that particular location, and so it made it problematic to provide the landscape buffer to the size that they're requesting. But in terms of how that footprint has changed compared to the one across the road, the applicant is here and could probably address that a little better than I am, I can, because they're the architects that actually prepared both.
Okay. Ben, you think that's like planned, and I can just kind of win out the logic behind the...
Sure. Sure. Let me. Okay. Slideshow from current slide. Okay, that's not working.
I think if you hit resume...
Resume session.
Oh, is it resume? Where is that?
Hit that same button. See, it resumes.
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you. I missed that. And I think we can clear this off. Let me see, how do we do that? Just a sec. Okay.
Hi, my name is Joseph Vigil. I'm with Workshop 8. Workshop 8 is the architect on this project. Just by means of a little background, when we started the second phase, we kind of assumed that the second phase would look a lot like the first phase. We had spent a fair amount of time through the first phase, working with the HOA in the neighborhood to find a footprint that worked for them, and keeping the building off of Step Drive was very important to them. Pushing it to the south as much as we could was important to them. So we went into this knowing, you know, what their goals would be for the second phase. Just like we did for the first phase, we did for the second phase where, early on, we showed them really simply, simple massing models, showing what different options looked like. So for Spring Creek, we showed them what a two-story option would look like. We showed them what a three-story option would look like, and we also showed them what a four-story option would look like. Through those conversations, what we landed on was the three-story option is, and that was built, and it's working very well. Because of the grading, though, and to be able to drain the lot, we had to build up the south side a little bit. That pushed it up a little bit. We're still within the height limit. But when we went back to the table to do that same exercise with the second phase, because of the way the grading works, it slopes better and a little bit more to our favor. We don't have to build up the footprint as much. And we were able to show the HOA in the neighborhood what the two options look like right next to each other. So they now had a known quantity of what their Spring Creek looked like, three-story option with a pitched roof. We've got a diagram down here that shows them side by side. So yes, we've added a fourth story, but we haven't built up the site as much, and we're proposing a flat roof versus the pitched roof, which we had on the first one. So when you compare the two, the overall heights end up being very similar. So that's just some background on why we started talking about the four-story and the impact. The big impact, though, and the benefit to the neighborhood, was the reduced footprint. So if you look at the site plan here, and I will, I know you're looking at your monitors here.
Actually, let me show you. There's a, there's an option for you to...
Smart.
Yeah, and you can, like, use the highlighter and just with your...
Okay. All right, I will just use blue here for my conversation. So the three-story option essentially had the building coming up to the north more. To get that to park and drain, you can imagine, those parking spaces had to be put somewhere else. So the parking for the three-story option would have looked more like that, and pushed further against Step, and ultimately, the parking would be closer to the residents along there. So we looked at the two options about how that looked as far as where the parking was in relationship to their house. And then also, the relationship on this north side, so if the houses are up here, the distance there at three stories versus the distance there at four stories. And we were able to talk with them in an interactive model and show the, as Ben showed, the shadows that are generated by the building. We were able to really show them what the building felt like standing from their porches looking back at it. And we would go back and forth, and we'd have discussions about what felt the most appropriate. I think it was really nice that the HOA really reached out to the residents that would be most affected. We had specific meetings with them, and really, the HOA let them be the loudest voice, and we worked with them to find what best configuration would work for them and impact them the least. And this is where we landed.
So I had a couple of quick questions. So the, can you show me on that map where the landscape variance is exactly, that we're looking to reduce from 20-feet buffer down to 14 or to 7?
How do you clear it? I'll just try to clear this and have that conversation. Okay. Right. So Ben's got the two red boxes shown there. That's where they occur. To try to show you where the parking is, we have the first variance there on the east side, just meeting parking standards, that distance from the building, that's as close as we could get it to the building, and then that ultimately pushed into that 20-foot section.
It's the parking, not the building, that's giving you the landscape buffer issue?
Correct.
I just, I guess my curiosity is, were the building bigger, would that landscape buffer have been even smaller? I can't imagine that it wouldn't have had to have been.
Had we gone that direction, we probably would have pushed the parking out more. There would have been less green space for the neighborhood in that instance.
Green space on the exterior of the development, not on the interior?
Correct. Well, adjacent to Step Drive and adjacent to the neighborhood, anyway, within the property line. There would have been less green space for the neighborhood in that instance.
Green space on the exterior of the development, not on the interior?
Correct. Well, adjacent to step drive and adjacent to the neighborhood anyway, within the property line.
Which is not the same thing as the landscape buffer, that green? Or it is?
Technically, yes, but would be a different issue, if that makes sense.
Okay, thanks.
I'm, I'm gonna jump in with a question. Mr. Veal, so when you came up with the four foot, or four-story building and the three-story building, laws of perspective start to apply. Did you do a calculation of like what the view angle would be? Like, like if I were standing in the same place, looking at the three-story building, how much is the angle that I would tip my head up in order to hit the first point of that building that I see versus what is the angle of my, my eyes when I look at the four-story? And what's the difference in those angles?
You know, we didn't generate specific angles. We did have a live model that we could spin them around on and so we could literally show them from their front porch what it looked like. I don't have those angles calculated. Ben, in his presentation somewhere, had that, one of those diagrams that we set up.
Right, there was that one drawing. Yes, this one.
Right here. So for instance, if, if one is standing here, I mean, we can draw that angle.
Okay.
Versus if one is standing there.
Okay. I mean, it's a, it's a good visual demonstration. I'll make up my own mind about it. So, thank you for doing that.
I don't know what those actual angles are. That was never done, but...
Sure, sure. But that's a, that's a good way to demonstrate that. Commissioner Pollan.
Yeah, going back to the second one, the, the exception for where it's seven feet, I just want to make sure I understand that. Can you go back to the site plan again, real quickly? So the, the place where the landscape buffer is being asked to be put down to seven, can you show how that is in effect with the parking? I think I understand it, but if, if you can kind of draw in where the parking is.
I'm sorry, I was concentrating...
Yeah, I mean, my, and my main point is, are the cars, is it because you have lots kind of coming down, what, with the perpendicular? Or, or should I say parallel to the, to step at that point? Is that...
We've got two different locations. The one on the west, those are all...
Yes, that's what I'm concerned about.
Those are all nose-in parking. So yeah, they're, they're perpendicular, parallel to step drive at that point.
So basically, you need to get another lot or two, spacer two, and that's why I cut into it to up to seven feet.
Correct.
Commissioner Teta.
Two questions. How many parking spaces do we have and what's the price point?
The, we have 60 spaces, so we have exactly one per unit. And the price pointing is construction costs?
No. So this is age regulated also?
Yes.
And what does that mean? You have to be how old?
55 or older.
I'm almost there. And are they all two-bedroom?
We have 52 one-bedroom and eight two-bedroom units.
So what does a one-bedroom rent for?
I'm gonna turn that over to Michael Reese, the director of Longmont Housing Development Corporation.
Good evening.
My name is Michael Reese. I'm the director of Longmont Housing Authority and the Longmont Housing Development Corporation. Question was, the rents of the rental property. First, let me unpack that. The land was annexed to have property built at under 50% of the area median income for household size. Spring Creek, for example, when we placed it in service, the rents for the one-bedrooms are 560 and actually, Crystal has that...
549.
549 and then the two.
40%.
Pretty good. Just give me the 50s. The 40s.
Between 550 and 750.
550 and 750 for the ones and twos are at Spring Creek. What will affect this building will be the timing of when we get all the funding together and which year we place it in service triggers where those rent structures are. But very affordable, aimed at below 50% of AMI, which was the original intention of the ground being annexed.
Quick question. Are those rents subsidized federally or...
So it is a tax credit program building. What is subsidized is essentially the cost of construction and building the building. So we're able to enter, put the building in, in service with a debt structure that's much lower than a typical market model. In the, we may have, at the, we're penciling out numbers now that final debt will be 30% of value where marketplace might be 60 or 80% of value. So that's how we deliver affordable units these days. Subsidy days are, have been gone for quite some time.
Thank you.
Mr. Reese, stay with that.
Sure, and I actually have a letter I'd like to share.
Okay. I have a question for you. I believe on your previous project, that there was preference given to seniors who were displaced by the flood. Is that true here as well?
So the previous building, Spring Creek Apartments, was funded, was funded heavily with some flood recovery money. And currently, we do not have additional flood recovery money in this building. That doesn't preclude us from opening a preference up for flood victims. Spring Creek ultimately had seven of its 60 units rented by flood victims. Seven?
Five? Seven?
Seven. So more than 10%. And that's three years after the flood. This building will be, you know, six years after the flood. And there's nothing that precludes us from leaving that out as a preference. But right now, there's no funding from that source any longer.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I have a question for Ben and then, but you are waving a piece of paper.
Yeah, I, I just, I appreciate the homeowners association and all the activity we worked with. Ultimately, they did provide a letter of support. It didn't make your packet. That was my fault for not providing it to Ben. And if I could enter it into the evidence, into the packet, that'd be great.
Attorney Kramer? Yes, he's nodding yes. It's okay to enter this into the...
Chair Shernick, yes, that's fine. If you just give it to Jane.
Okay.
Jane, I only have enough for everybody but you.
Okay. Okay. I do, actually, either Ben or Mr. Reese. In our packet was a email from a resident saying, "In the original neighborhood development plan, the site was designated as a two-story senior apartment complex. This is what I understood could be built and I am agreeable to that." And so she's basically raising the question of, of why are we now at, you know, three and four stories? But I'm asking for just a little bit of historical knowledge on either of your part, whether this PUD ever actually had this designated as a two-story project.
Commissioner Shernick, I have in my possession, I was actually anticipating this question, the Pepler Neighborhood Concept Plan. And it states that for, for this particular location was one designated, and these are the exact words and I'd be happy to show this to you, high-density residential and then in parentheses, multi-family slash senior housing. And then in the, in the Prairie Village Concept Plan, it, it basically just shows high density and then senior living and slash or condominiums. I only have one copy, but I'd be happy to show that to you.
Well, just a follow-up question. So when we, when we say high density, do we associate stories or heights to...
These documents do not, but it does reference, it does reference densities. And so the...
So, so basically, because it's a PUD, we don't designate heights with, with the type of...
Yeah, the Prairie Village Design Guidelines do establish the heights for, for the Prairie Village neighborhood and they, they cap those at, at 40 feet.
Okay.
But then you have densities which are established through the comprehensive plan and as well as the Land Development Code.
Okay. Can I add to that?
Oh, yes, sir.
The land was annexed under the old inclusionary zoning negotiation process with the city. And because it was to be affordable, it had a boost, which got it from 25 units per acre, which would have been 50 units on each site, got a boost to the 60. So it has a little bit more. It got captured under that affordable housing component. So 60 units has always been the intention. We, in order to actually do that with any design, with a decent design, we had to wear three and four-story options. The two-story that was originally, was never proposed. We sort of put it out to the housing, the homeowners association. It really fills the neighborhood and, and the homeowners association rejected it on Spring Creek. So we didn't even offer it as a solution for all river.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reese. Thank you, Ben. Commissioner Teta.
Michael, how many of these buildings are you proposing altogether or is this the end of it or just the two?
In the city of Longmont or in this site?
At that site.
Yeah, no, this is the second phase and this is, this will fill out the lot and it's the last, we don't own any, any other land in the neighborhood.
Further discussion, thoughts? Commissioner Height?
Thanks. Ben, I have one more question. So now there are Prairie Village Design Guidelines that, that cap these, am I on?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That, they cap the height at 40 feet. So how does, and I'm starting with how do we exceed this height limitation and how do we exceed or how do we grant a variance on this landscape buffer if these Prairie Village Design Guidelines, which I haven't seen and I don't know how they can be deviated from? How do we get to here?
Commissioner Height, so like, like in the Land Development Code, height is established. And this being a PUD, then the height is somewhat flexible, but, but in the design guidelines, they can, they can establish that height limitation. And so in this case, they, they established it at 40 feet. And this is roughly comparable to, to height restrictions for multifamily and say in our three zoning district. In order to circumvent that, however, they are indeed requesting a, a height exception. So it's like a, like a variance to a numeric standard, which would exceed that limit of 40 feet. And that is something that the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to grant, which is why this is reflected on your PZRs. So this is, this is part of their, the application that they have submitted with us. And then we as staff support that because of all of the other mitigating circumstances and pulling the building back, the, the wider landscape buffer. And they demonstrated that there would not be any adverse impacts such as, you know, shadows and shade, you know, affecting the properties across the street.
So we are amending a PUD plan?
Commissioner Height, well, the, the, the PUD plan, I do not believe has established the height. And so that was established with the, the design guidelines for Prairie Village. Don, if you can correct me.
Attorney Shernick, Commissioner Height, so just to give a little bit of background. So when the original preliminary development plan went through prior to about 2003-ish, I worked on it. What we identified was that while we had a preliminary plat and a preliminary development plan that identified and laid out how this development was going to occur, the applicant at that time knew that he wasn't going to be the one to build, for example, these buildings that the housing authority has. He knew that that was a part of his requirement to meet his affordable housing requirement. He was going to give this land to the housing authority. They would develop it. So when we brought the preliminary development plan and the preliminary plat, we identified in the original preliminary development plan for the entire parcel, almost 160 acres, we put specific notes in there that said that all of these blocks had to come back in for their own preliminary development plan and final development plan. So I think you can think of it as an amendment to the original preliminary development plan, but technically, it's not. It is the first development plan on these lots because the notes said that they had to come in for approval, that we were not granting any land use approvals for any of these blocks. The concept plan, with the rezoning that occurred, so now we're going back to kind of that color map that Ben held up, that limited the total number of units that could happen on the property. And then those units were carried over on to the development plan for the original PUD that said that these blocks were limited to no more than a certain number of units on each block. But again, the, the plan itself required them to come forward for any approvals for this. So really, you are establishing the design guidelines for this lot by approving and hearing this development plan proposal for this specific use. There is, there is really no amendment that, that's occurring.
So the Prairie Village Design Guidelines are in there and that these two properties, these silver property now?
So, so the guidelines we use from the design standpoint to make sure that they still fit into the general character of the neighborhood, we try to allow some flexibility because as the planning commission, I think we've had these discussions in the past, not always is it necessarily, because a neighborhood has started in one design vernacular that it must continue in that. And so we have talked with additional masonry elements, quality of materials, things like that, that would fit in with what you see in that existing residential development, that we have tried to incorporate those into it versus a specific, it must look like a typical multifamily apartment complex. Because the design or the, the little drawing that was in there was really what I would think of as a typical 70s, 80s style of a apartment building. And we didn't think that that's really what anybody would want to see. This is a, is a very creative design, but the materials and fitting in with the neighborhood from that standpoint, from a quality, we felt was spelled out in those design guidelines and that they're meeting those.
So, let me make sure I understand. There was a, there was a PUD approval at some point in time, just not a terribly specific PUD approval? It was identified as going to be PUD or what was it exactly that happened?
So when the rezoning occurred, so remember we, the, in the past, this was originally all industrial economic development land. It was identified as a business park originally, when it was brought into the city as part of the Heartland Annexation. When Lon LaRue came in with the Peplers and then requested the rezoning, he presented to the council with his concept plan, a design guideline book. Okay? That book talked about the design concepts of what he expected to happen with this neighborhood, what his vision was for it. And then as we have created the development plans for each phase or filing that have come forward, we have gone into that design guideline book and had those inserted, for example, into the single-family areas and then modified them if need be through the PUD process to give us the rules and regulations then for when the single-family homes were built. And this is really the same thing. We have pulled what we believe was the intent out of that design guidelines book and have had the architects go through and design a building that we believe meets the intent of that original design book for the, the community that was approved as part of the concept plan for this rezoning. And we have been applying that every time it comes in for a preliminary development plan approval, whether it be single-family, multifamily, or there's still a potential for townhomes or condos to the south and east of this, that is what we would apply. And if they want to try and change something, this is the venue that they would ask for it in, in this public setting. So if they wanted to do a different design, not provide certain materials, they would be requesting that as part of their PUD plan. And because there's never been a PUD approved on it previously, they're not amending it, they're trying to set their PUD up to meet their needs and ours and conform to that original concept plan design guideline. The, the simple way to think about it is that the design guideline book, okay, so this book that I'm talking about that we don't have unfortunately here tonight, was never formally adopted with the, the preliminary development plan for this lot. they're not amending it, they're trying to set their PUD up to meet their needs and ours and conform to that original concept plan design guideline. The simple way to think about it is that the design guideline book, okay, so this book that I'm talking about that we don't have unfortunately here tonight, was never formally adopted with the preliminary development plan for this lot. This is trying to meet the intent of that and establish a design just for its block.
We have Lon LaRue's book, and they're trying to match development to his idea.
Of what was presented to the council when he got the rezoning. Because that was what he expressed to the council through his, with his concept plan of this was what he was going to have developed on this property. And I would say that if you go through that design book and look at it, everything that's happened out there, at least it's my belief, others may disagree, but I believe we have been true to what the original intent was when we've, when he established that neighborhood and moved through with the designs that he was trying to achieve.
This project, these two problems, the height exception and the landscape buffer, that's actually code-based problems that this PUD has.
Correct, correct.
Commissioner Teta.
I think it looks like a really high-quality product. I think we have a need for it in the community. We filled up the other building. They seem like they're really good neighbors. I came in here thinking that I didn't like the idea of the four stories versus three and a flat roof instead of peaked, that they wouldn't match. And consistency seemed important to me. The HOA seems to have no issue at all, though, with the four stories. So I don't know how paternal I need to be on their behalf. The, but as Judd brings up, seems like we could, we could do away with, I would think, both of the variance requests by forcing them to do the three-story plan instead of the four-story. And I would have to think they could come up with a bigger landscape buffer and obviously not need the height variance. But I'm not sure that is a better result. So I think I'd be in favor of granting both variances.
Commissioner Pollan.
Yeah, I will say this, that based after this presentation, and I will want to say, first of all, that I applaud the applicant. This is a great example of how an applicant can work with the surrounding community to understand what their concerns are and work with them to a goal where they both can come to an agreement on the property. I'm very happy with the way that went through. Based on the fact, as Commissioner Teta, that this satisfies a need in our community. And we know that going forward, there will be more demand for senior housing. And given the fact that the HOA is in acceptance of this, I will be for this variance and for approving this.
Commissioner Brunel.
Yeah, I think I'd just like to echo Commissioner Pollan's comments a little bit. I mean, I really, the idea of an applicant actually working with the residents nearest and having the most impact of this and actually providing sort of almost like a multiple choice, kind of a scenario for them is, I don't know, I'm not sure I've seen that before. And I also, you know, applaud that. I feel like, given, given that, and, and, you know, like, it's a little disconcerting to hear, to see the letters, you know, from the surrounding neighborhood. But it's also, this is not, it's, it seems like it's about the best that it can be. You know, like basically, the four stories, people hear that. They're not excited about it. Even when you look at that graph, the three versus the four with the distances, I mean, it looked to me like they're going to be better off with the four. So, you know, given with what we have here, I'm going to also say that I'll probably be in, in support of the variances.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Hey, Ben. Ben, did we have to grant a variance for the neighboring project who seems to be perhaps one or two feet above forty feet?
Commissioner Goldberg, so now is when I get to admit to my fallibility. So when we had originally proposed that, the Planning and Zoning Commission did have to approve, or we asked them to approve a height exception. And it was about one foot, ten-plus inches. And those were for the appurtenances that were above the roof. So they were like the elevator shaft and things like that. And then I later discovered that the height exception did not include those. So, so yes, a height exception was approved, but it really didn't need to be approved. But having said that, what we're looking at here is a difference of about two, two and a half, three feet between this building and the prior one.
Ben, during our last meeting, you were not here for it, but it was a good one. We had a member of the audience, of the public, mention his frustration and challenge with his perception that commissions and councils perhaps don't hear out the public. And maybe his voice is lost. And maybe we've decided before we even walked in the room. So I guess what I'd like to do is first jump, get a little bit deeper in with Mr. Brunel, Commissioner Brunel's comment about the letters. There were, although in front of us today, there was zero complaints. In our packet, it was at least seven complaints of everyone saying they hate four stories. But here we are, a commission who seemed to already be leaning towards approving the project. And I think with good reason. But Ben, I just wonder if you can help me comfort Mr. Hoover and Don and Elaine Perry and Chris and Shonda and all of the other folks who submitted their, their concerns with why this four-story option is not as scary or daunting as it might seem on print.
Chairman Shurnak, Commissioner Goldberg, I think you raise a very, very good question. So as, as was noted previously, the height between the two is comparable. This one is slightly taller than the one that was approved prior and then recently constructed and is now fully occupied. And having said that, they are providing fifty to sixty feet of landscape buffer along that northern side. They have pulled the building back at least an additional thirty feet from the one that was previously approved as a result of going with the four-story option versus the three-story option because they were able to shrink up the footprint. So also too, we've demonstrated that on the shortest day of the year, there is, there is no impact with respect to shade and shadow. By the time the sun sets, the shade, the shadows are going well off to the east and they're not going to be impacting the property owners to the north. If anything, they'll be impacting the apartment off across the street from Homestead Parkway. Now, I did, I did attend the neighborhood, the first neighborhood meeting. And they, where they did present the two options. And I recall hearing folks in that room saying, like you, I was prepared to hate this four-story option. And then after hearing the two presentations, they were sold on the four-story option. Because the height of it is not so significantly different than the one that was previously approved. But it is set back substantially more. And they're providing a substantial amount of landscaping. When, as I'd noted, when we first sent out the notice of development application for this project, we did receive those letters. And to answer the concerns of that neighbor who said that they feel like they're not heard, we, as planners, are obligated to ensure that, that you, the decision-making bodies, are in fact heard. And this is why they were included in your packet. Subsequent to the notice of public hearing going out, however, I received zero phone calls, zero emails, and zero letters. So I don't know if that helps.
Ben, wait. Commissioner Flag, can you hit your microphone so Commissioner Goldberg can do a follow-on?
Thanks, Ben. And I think it is for exactly all those reasons that I too will be in, in support of the variances before us. We always, and let me just speak for myself, I always appreciate a developer who is dynamic and responsive and takes into consideration the feedback from the neighbors and is indeed trying to be a good neighbor. And this is a good example of that, as Commissioner Pollan has already identified. And that thirty-plus feet of setback that the four-story model afforded the developer perhaps gave, is as a result, giving the neighbors a better, a better final product. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Commissioner Pollan.
As a follow-up to that, Ben, is it fair to say that the letters that are included in our packet were received before the plans and, or before the final plans were actually reshown to the people? And that these letters were actually taken into consideration by the developer? And that, and helped them with the, working with the residents?
I'll turn that over.
Does this happen every night with every speaker? Okay. The, when we first, when we first met and entered the planning process and we notified the neighborhood in September or October of 2015, we got the letters and emails that you have received in your packet. And that's when we went out to the neighborhood and held subsequent meetings at Alpine Elementary and then at the trailer at Spring Creek to be able to, because they got, they got a notice, just like anyone would react, got a notice and said, hey, we're building a four-story building here. And that got some people's attention. So we got pretty good attendance at that first meeting. And we were able to walk through and given the technology, be able to walk through the technology and show them and fly them around a building, we, we really did change people's minds that night. And they entered the meeting, and Ben is correct, people, they entered the meeting with quite a bit of apprehension. And as Arlen attested to earlier, testified earlier, that we, the HOA, has not really heard any complaints about our proposal. So we moved ahead. And part of that was, if we had received a significant amount of pushback, we would have just come in with a three-story building. So we, we think we listened to the neighborhood, heard them, made the adjustments. And then by making that change, we entered into some technical challenges of fitting even a four-story building correctly with all the parking. And just to be clear, it was the four-story issue and parking, which were the first two, what the neighborhood is, was mostly concerned about.
Commissioner Flag, did you have anything further? Okay, all right. Commissioner Height.
Thank you. In my summary, I think I'm going to clarify that I think what we're being asked for is to review a two-foot, ten-inch height exception, the standards for which are 1502.050D, which require that the applicant submit a plan that incorporates a creative design that meets the purpose and intent of the standard that's being modified and represents an improvement in quality over strict, strict application of the standard. I think the two-foot, ten-inch exception that they're seeking meets that standard. But with respect to the landscape buffer variance, I'm still stuck. Ben, your presentation identifies that we need to just review that variance pursuant to the terms of approving a PUD preliminary and final plan application. I don't see how, and you clarified for me that the problem is with the buffer exceptions, they need a variance, which I don't know how it gets out of the strict variance standard under 1502.050J to just being reviewed under the PUD standards. Can you explain, try to explain that to me one more time?
Certainly. So the PUD MU's, they are subject to a different standard with respect to two variances. And I did, I did go over that in your, in your communication. And I could point specifically to that particular code section, if that would be helpful.
You did point out the standard for... Microphone. Sorry, I don't, I keep turning it off so that you can be heard. You did point out the standards for approval of a PUD under 1502.050F5 for an MU, a PUD MU. But I don't see anywhere in there that it addresses dealing with landscape buffer variances or how that gets approved or what the review criteria are, what the standards are to approve that landscape buffer variance. Other than, we're dealing with a PUD that relies upon standards from which we are varying, from, for which, it seems to me, we have to apply the variance standards. I'm not, I'm not legally getting to the point where you are.
So... The, the specific section is in Land Development Code 1502.050F5. And it requires all PUD MU developments comply with common review standards. And this is with respect to variances. So basically, it states that all PUD MU developments comply with common review standards for all minor and major development applications. And so we have responded to that earlier in the communication and felt like that this project does in fact meet that standard. But then it goes on to state that, that, that in addition to that, that it must also meet the following review standards. And one of those is, any addition of residential units to a planned commercial or industrial development must benefit both the employers and residents of the PUD. The design and operations of the non-residential land uses of the PUD will not result in adverse impacts on the residential uses in the PUD. There will be enough residential uses to create a self-supporting neighborhood. And the plan will integrate the residential uses within the district and not result in the creation of isolated pockets of residential uses and will provide adequate amenities for residents. And lastly, any proposed retail uses will be consistent with the land use designation on the LACP or otherwise be consistent with the criteria for neighborhood commercial centers or multi-neighborhood commercial centers. And so the criteria, and I think you're probably pretty familiar with the variance criteria, because you've heard a number of those recently, is substantially different. So they set the bar somewhat lower for the PUD MU's. So the first was to meet the common review standards in 1502.040. And then these additional review standards, which I've just read to you.
Any further follow-on, Commissioner Height? Okay. Other comments? Ben, can you turn off your microphone, please? Commissioner Pollan.
I move, given the fact, through the conversation and through my previous comments, I move that we approve PZR 2017-9B with the two items of applicant agrees to make all staff requested changes to the plans and applicant agrees to provide a dense thicket of shrubs along the northern landscape buffer to the satisfaction of the city for purposes of providing adequate screening of parking lot headlights.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve PZR 2017-9B. Commissioner Teta, seconds. Further discussion, comments? I'm the only one who hasn't chimed in. I'm fully in favor, but everybody else has said all the reasons why. And I fully agree with them. So let's take a vote. Okay, that passes six to one with Commissioner Height dissenting. And this item now enters a seven-day appeal period. During this time, any aggrieved party may appeal the commission's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating why the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision should be amended or reversed by city council. All appeals must be in writing and must be received in the city clerk's office and the planning office within the seven-day appeal period, which begins Thursday, January 26th at 8:00 a.m. and ends Wednesday, February 1st at 5:00 p.m. Thank you very much to the applicant, Mr. Reese, Mr. V. Hilt. Thank you for your presentations and for your patience with all of our questions. Ben, thank you very much for your presentation.
Likewise, thank you to taking the time to review our proposal, certainly to Ben for working with us over the last year-plus months and getting through this process. Look forward to getting it built. Thanks again.
Okay.
And thank you to the HOA for being wonderful neighbors.
Yes, and thank you to the public for coming tonight and listening to us discuss the issue. We will move on. I need to find my agenda. The next item is item number six, Mondello Trade Shop Conditional Use Site Plan and Variance to the Non-Residential Design Standards with Planner Ben Ortiz. to the Non-Residential Design Standards with Planner Ben Ortiz.
If you'll give me a moment, I need to load up the other presentation. But I do have a question for the commission, so the, the applicant does have a presentation. Would you like to hear his first?
I think we're really comfortable with hearing your presentation first, then the applicant's, and then going to public hearing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, we will do that. Thank you for your patience. This project before you this evening is the Mondello Trade Shop Conditional Use Site Plan and Variance. The project is located in the Weaver Business Park, um, which is delineated by the yellow line on your screen, and, uh, that is located south of Third Avenue and east of Alpine Street. The project itself is located at 160 Primrose, 165 Primrose Court. And that is this look, this little, uh, piece of property here. So the zoning for this particular project is business light industrial. The Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan envision Longmont land use designation is mixed-use employment. Small-scale manufacturing is considered a primary use within the mixed-use employment land use. The specific project is, the project area is 23,696 square feet or 0.544 acres. The building area, which is delineated by this gray box here, is 4,000 square feet. It will be divided into two units. The Mondello Trade Shop will occupy Unit A, and then Unit B will be rented to another user. The, the amount of common open space that's required for this particular development is 20%. The applicant has provided almost 30% common open space for this project. So the proposed use is going to be for a carpentry, carpentry trade shop, and that is defined in our zoning code as a special trade contractor's shop, including limited fabrications. And so this type of use is regarded as a conditional use in the business light industrial zoning district, which does require Planning and Zoning Commission approval. Primrose Court is, if you follow this, this is the, the western edge of the right-of-way of Primrose Court, so it, this project does, is located on a cul-de-sac. And then, uh, for those entering the site, you would enter in from the north side, and there's a 13-foot drive aisle, and then angled parking here in front of the building with handicap parking, and then you would exit, uh, to the south. So the, the backlot, um, will be strictly for his, the, the, for keeping his work vehicles, and those will be moved out regularly, and the backlot will be screened by a, a 100% opaque fence, so you will not be able to see it from the street. So the applicant is requesting a 22% of the facade to be metal. So the Land Development Code, however, limits the amount of metal, um, as an architectural feature to no more than, uh, 10% of the facade of the building. So the allowed amount has been exceeded on all four sides. So if you look at the metal strip going to the roof on the north and south elevations, this is the north elevation, that's the metal strip, and this is the south elevation. The, the three elevations together, so these two elevations along with the front elevation, um, when you, when you, it's, it's hard to visualize, but if you, you connect up this one and then this one, so it kinda gives sort of, um, it gives the appearance of a metal column from the street. So this, the intent was for this to be architectural. And so, um, but he, he had noted in his, um, variance review criteria, his, his reasonings for, uh, this request, and, and staff does support his variance for a number of reasons. The building will have, uh, greater diversity of materials than some of the nearby buildings, and in the subsequent slide, I'll show you some of what those nearby buildings look like. The greater use of metal than the code allows, it will allow a more reasonable return on the applicant's investment. The architecture design won't change the essential character of the neighborhood. The applicant wasn't aware of the regulation when he purchased the building, and we believe the spirit and intent of the regulation was to prevent all metal buildings from being erected. So we feel this regulation has done the job for which it was intended, despite the fact that the architecture does exceed the limited, limitation requirement. And, uh, given his intent, uh, we feel it is the least deviation that will afford relief as the applicant is using metal for building protection. So namely, he will have work vehicles on the back of the building that, that, that they will need to exit and enter. The concern is that if one of those, one of the vehicles were to accidentally hit the building, then this will provide greater protection for, for the building versus, say, masonry or stone. So in, in this slide, we show, um, two different buildings. The building here on the upper left-hand corner is located at 164 Primrose Court, and this, this particular building, uh, this photograph is taken from the Mondello property. This is for the Workwell Corporate Headquarters, and this shows the, uh, west and south facades of this building. Now, the buildings, the building on the right is the building immediately north of where the, the Mondello, um, project is located. So this particular facade in here is, uh, the facade closest to the Mondello, um, uh, Conditional Use Site Plan. This one down here is the front of the building, which faces Weaver Park Road, and so as you can see, they're, uh, very monolithic in their design, as well as their colors. So this particular bui, building at 705 Weaver Park Road, that is located on the southeast corner of Primrose Court and Weaver Park Road, so it's, it's basically across the street and then, and then up at the corner, uh, from where the Mondello, uh, site is located. This building here, down here in the lower left-hand corner, is immediately across the street from, uh, Primrose Court, and as you can see, uh, that, that, the building is just basically solid cement, they're one color, the entire facade looks like this. It's very monolithic, and there's, uh, virtually, uh, no architectural features. And then this, this building here is, uh, is just to the east of, of Primrose Court and across Weaver Park Road. And so there's, uh, some attempt at, at diversification with respect to colors and, and materials, but, but again, not, not a great deal. And so this is a very short presentation for you, I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions. But the Planning and Zoning Commission will be asked to, uh, uh, make decisions on two separate PZRs. The first PZR is for the approval of the Conditional Use Site Plan, and the second is for the approval of the, uh, variance. So the conditionally, so your choices for the Conditional Use Site Plan are to approve the Mondello Conditional Use Site Plan without conditions, as reflected in PZR 2017-7A, approve the Mondello Conditional Use Site Plan with conditions, as reflected in PZR 2017-7B, or deny the Mondello Conditional Use Site Plan, as reflected in PZR 2017-7C. And for the variance, you have similarly three options, uh, which would be to approve the Mondello variance without conditions, as reflected in PZR 2017-8A, approve the Mondello variance with conditions, with conditions, as reflected in PZR 2017-8B, or deny the Mondello variance, as reflected in PZR 2017-8C. And staff does recommend approving the Mondello Trade Shop Conditional Use Site Plan without conditions, as reflected in PZR 2017-7A, and approve the Mondello Trade Shop variance without conditions, as reflected in PZR 2017-8A. And that concludes my presentation, and so with that, um, if you would like to ask questions now or, or hear from the applicant, um, we'd be happy to, to set that up for him.
Yeah, uh, Ben, I have a, a clarifying question. Can you go back a couple slides to...
Sure.
Shows 650 Weaver Park, yep, down on the bottom left.
Uh-huh.
Looks like a metal awning, looks like standing seam metal.
It does.
Do you know, like, I mean, do metal awnings count toward facade and facade use of metal? And... Because this looks, I mean, the way the awning is constructed, it looks like it's part of their facade, not really an awning, it provides like nine inches of shade.
Uh, well, the, the, the code does allow standing metal seam roofs, and, and the standing metal seam roofs do not count towards that particular facade, uh, towards the, the, the metal restriction on facades. So the central question is whether or not this counts as roof or as facade, and so we're sort of in between. And I believe that this building was built before this current code was, um, went into effect, uh, but...
But, but since we don't have a photograph of the entire building, from your recollection, that awning structure, whatever it is, that is made of metal, runs the entire length?
That is correct.
Okay.
The, the entire building basically looks like this one segment, I mean, all the way from one end to the other, it is just basically flat wall of this color with that particular metal awning.
Okay, alright, thank you. Oh, Commissioner Height?
Planner Ortiz, I think I found, am I on? Just not talking into it correctly.
Yeah, so...
I think I found the, um, Non-Residential Design Standard that limits, um, metal to 10%, and I think it's 150512011. But 11B has maybe an out, I just wanna know why we didn't, why we're not pursuing that. And as I read it, it says metal may be used in architectural, metal may be used as an architectural feature covering no more than 10% of the facade of a building unless the decision-making body determines that additional metal in the design creates a high-quality or unique building design that meets the purpose and intent of the standards of this section. Why aren't we going that route?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Height. Well, as you know, the, the decision-making body in this, in this particular application, applications case is the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that is by virtue of the fact that this is, um, a Conditional Use Site Plan, so those are automatic public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Because you are going, because you had to hear this project, then it was incumbent on you to also weigh in on the additional metal as well.
Oh, um, do you, do you have a follow-on? Yes, okay.
No, I'm on. Um, I'm saying, instead of pursuing this as a variance, why aren't we pursuing this pursuant to our inherent authority, which I think also backs up under 1501-040B, to grant variances from non, from, yeah, these non-residential design standards, specifically under 11B, which says unless we find that the additional metal in the design creates a high-quality, unique building design that meets the purpose and intent of the standards, if we can find that, do we, can't we avoid having to go down the variance rabbit hole?
Chair Shrennig, Commissioner Height, yes. I had a different interpretation.
Okay. Commissioner Flag?
In regards to the special trade shop and why there needs to be a conditional use, is it, well, maybe I should ask, why is that? Is it because of fabrication or other kinds of issues?
That's a great question. Commissioner Flag, so the business light industrial zoning district was really more intended for business park-type development, including really light industrial, um, R&amp;D type of, 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 um, you know, developments. So this one goes a little bit beyond that, so there's actually a little bit more of a manufacturing component associated with the trade shop than you would find in the real light industrial type uses. And so, uh, when this code was developed, we felt that there needed to be a slightly higher standard for, for a slightly more intensive industrial type of a use.
And to follow up, does that also include having a vehicle storage yard?
Commissioner Flag, yes, you're absolutely correct. Now, if, what we, now, outdoor storage is actually not permitted in the BLI zoning district under this particular application. However, when we're thinking of outdoor storage, we're thinking of storing things like tractors, trailers, other equipment, materials, that, that, that stay for long periods of time. That what he's, his intent is to, to park his car in the front, grab his work vehicle, take it out, make his installations, bring it back. So those will be moved out regularly. There won't be any storage of any equipment, any materials, things like that. And, and we would stipulate that on the site plan.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bruno?
Uh, yeah, Ben, um, I assume that when this was presented, it was, it sort of met the same requirements as far as the neighbors having to be informed of what was going on. I mean, in my mind, I guess the one thing that would be concerning to me would be noise if there's more of a heavy manufacturing thing. Did any of those neighbors express concern over that?
Commissioner Bruno, uh, throughout the entire process, um, the, the neighborhood meeting, no one showed from the neighborhood, uh, no one responded to the notice of application, no one responded to the public hearing. Having said that, however, he is subject to both daytime and nighttime noise standards that are already established in the city's municipal codes. So, um, if he does violate those noise ordinances, and if there are complaints, then code enforcement can take action on that and, and issue him a cease and desist order or notice of violation so that he comes into compliance.
Thanks.
Any further questions for Ben? Otherwise, we'll go to the applicant's presentation. We're ready for Mr. Mondello, then.
Give me a couple minutes, I'll get this for you.
My name is Adrian Mondello, I'm of Three Model Construction. And I'm just going to go through the presentation.
Can you state your address for the record too?
Personal address?
Or business address?
It's 1003 Lilac Street.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, so we've bought this lot in Weaver Park with the intent of making a shop that we could use for carpentry and other types of trade use. I do building construction, so I'll have trucks and trailers parked there and fabricate things, move them onto the trailers, and then move the trailers out to install. So we needed a back lot somewhere where we could park things fenced off and then have a few parking spaces up front. So this was an ideal spot for us. So to save time, I'm going to go through quickly and just show you the presentation, and then I'll field some questions if you guys have any. Took some pictures, some local pictures of the site. So it's just a vacant lot, there's nothing there. It has never been developed. There is a culvert in the back, we're looking at it. So it's sort of going up against the back of the neighboring building there. You can see to the left on the top picture, the, much of the lot that we're developing is the back of somebody else's lot. Have a pretty good view of the sugar mill, which we're pretty proud of. So this is the front facade. You can see the mix of materials. We were going to focus on using, using the steel to kind of create an architectural element to the front. Instead of using steel as a, as a complete covering, we were using it architecturally. Again, the sides, you've seen these pictures. But see how, and on the left side of that picture, you can see how it wraps the corner. I took some other pictures as we go through. I took some other pictures of buildings around Longmont to show you exactly what I'm, what I'm going to propose. You have in front of you also the board, the materials boards. And these are some of the materials we're going to use. So this is the traditional way of using metal on a building. The vertical seams, they lend themselves to the structure of the building, but I don't think they're very interesting or pleasing to the eye. So this is sort of the idea that we're going for. It's by running the different panel, a little bit more of an interest. It's called an IC 72 panel. It has more of a corrugation to it, and it actually is much, much more interesting. And when you wrap a corner like that, I think it, it looks like it's a, like a column, so to speak. So I think this is a nice building, that actually it used to be fairly ugly, and now it, this has lent itself well. So.
Where is that building?
It's the corner of Francis and 11th, yep. And so this is the exact same panel that we're going to use. That's the layout. The floor plan, the unit, there'll be two units split directly down the center. Each will have its own restroom and office, and then the left unit will be a core shell. And that's it, that's the presentation. If you guys have any questions?
Sure. Anybody with questions for Mr. Mondello at this time? Commissioner Bruno.
Are you going to finish the metal exactly like that one with that, that same color and, and texture, sort of?
Exactly like the picture that I had, or this one?
Yeah, the one that's down there.
Not in the same color, no, no. That's just showing the corrugation. Yeah, it'll be in a different color. I'll go back to the color. So, right.
Here, let me show you, you can use this feature to, to point out. This is like, you need the laser pointer so that that can show where it's at.
Okay, great, yeah. I can't read exactly which ones it is. Much of the building is going to be, right, so this is the roof color, this is the roof color, this is the panel color, I think. So it's going to be similar. And then we've got our trim color is this. And then the trim around the doors will be blue.
I have a question for Mr. Mondello. You mentioned that you're concerned about trucks hitting the building. Makes it sound like there's a lot of bad drivers. But are, are you a contractor who's bringing in a lot of people who, who you're just hiring temporarily, and therefore you really don't know how well they'll drive, and they might hit your building? I mean, it's, it's just an interesting rationale.
That's a great point, yeah. I hope not. I hope that I don't have to deal with it, but it's, in the event that it does happen, this is a fairly tight lot. So I would have preferred to have more space behind it, but it, being that it, let me go back to the layout here, the site plan. So there are two fairly narrow drives here and there. This one's a little bit larger. But I was concerned most about this one. In trying to make a corner here to get a vehicle, I was concerned that there were going to be some collisions here, possibly. It happens, I mean, it's, it's, I don't foresee it, but we're going to put bollards, concrete bollards up to protect it. But it is likely that it'll happen. And if it does happen, the steel will be a lot easier to replace, as you can replace it in sections with screws rather than have to tear off masonry and re-mortar.
Okay.
And so it should be a lot easier and cheaper to replace if it happens.
Okay. Further questions at this time? Okay, we're going to go to the public hearing part of this. Nobody has signed up. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing item of this, and we'll go back to questions amongst the commission. Commissioner Pollan.
Barring no apparent questions, at least at this time, I'd like to kind of give my thoughts. As far as the conditional use, I am in favor for that. This seems like it is an appropriate use for that area. I don't see any major concerns for surrounding businesses. For the second question about the variance, I am in agreement with the Commissioner here about 1505120 with regards to the building materials. 11B, the way that it's stated, is that it appears that we can make the decision that if we see that this is of benefits for the design, that we can, and I'm going to guess, my interpretation is that, that is how we give the variance, is that we agree that the decision-making body determines that additional metal in the design creates a high quality or unique building design that meets the purpose and intent of the standards in this section. I'm in favor of that at this time, and those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Pollan. I'm going to chime in real fast and say that steel buildings are more sustainable. Steel is primarily a recycled material. It keeps getting recycled over and over. So more steel facade, more sustainability. It's a pre-manufactured building, if I'm correct, is that right, Mr. Mondello? Okay. So that is also a more sustainable way to build in many regards. So that's of benefit as well. I do need some help from fellow Commissioners Pollan and Height to, because given that I have other screens going on, I'm not looking at the development code. And maybe the attorney can chime in, but it sounds to me as though procedurally, we may be facing potentially like denying the variance PZR because there's no variance needed. It sounds like, because they're, they're calling in to question other code which doesn't require variance? I'm not sure if I'm following.
Chair Shernick, if the, if the commission wanted to basically approve the metal, I don't think denial would be the way to go, that might confuse matters.
Okay.
I think the main thing to do would be to make that either part of the resolution of 7A, or just make it part of the motion approving resolution 7A, that the commission finds, and then recite the language in that code provision.
Okay, so making it a finding would be sufficient?
I think so.
Okay.
I think that would, that would clarify matters for the record.
Okay, all right, thanks. Other discussion, other comments? Commissioner Height.
I would have to say that the additional, the traditional method of filing variance under 1502050J5, I'm not sure I could get there, but I am comfortable with the standard of the 10% metal exception allowance that's provided under this code provision, 150512011. And that's, and I would support this plan under those guidelines.
Commissioner Teta.
Yeah, I think, it seems to me it was long enough ago with the storage facility that we should have already addressed the possibility or probability or potential for metal meeting our acceptance and not have to continue dealing with that. But I don't have a problem with the way it looks or the material.
I'm going to chime in with a couple more reasons for supporting the metal. The photograph that Ben brought tonight of 650 Weaver Park, even though they built that building prior to the, our metal development code for only 10%, looking at that photograph and doing a rough guesstimate of, of how much of that metal awning is covering the facade, it's about 30% of the facade. So they well exceed, you know, if they were under today's code, they'd well exceed it. So that's in favor of Mr. Mondello's proposition. Not to mention, in our packet, there was also reference to, and we saw a photograph of this, one of his neighbors already has a lot of metal machinery, tractors, storage containers already on their lot. So metal is not offensive in this neighborhood. It does not cause a, there's no adverse effect for more metal to exist. Do we have any motions? Commissioner Pollan.
Okay, first, I will move that we approve 2017-7A, which is the approval of the Mondello trade shop conditional site use plan, being that the type of business that they are putting in there are appropriate for that area.
Okay, let's, by the way, let's take this one PZR at a time. So we're working on PZR 2017-7A conditional use site plan, there's been a motion to approve that. Commissioner Flag.
I would second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Flag. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, let's vote. So that passes unanimously seven to zero, and looks like it's okay for my process statement to be for both PZRs, right? Because I just have one copy of this. Okay, all right, we'll wait for reading that. Okay, let's move on to figuring out PZR 2017-8A. Or eight, I should say, I don't want to force your hand. Commissioner Pollan.
Okay. Seeing that there's no further discussion, at least at this time, I would like to move that we approve 2017-8A, which is the approval of the Mondello trade shop variance as reflected in PZR 2017-8A. And the reason for the granting of the variance, I will cite 150512011B, which is unless the decision body, decision-making body determines that additional metal in the design creates a high quality or unique building design that meets the purpose and intent of the standards in this section.
Okay, are we clear on the motion? Sound good? Is there, we need a second if there's going to be a second or further discussion. Commissioner Height.
Yeah, can I interject a-
Sure.
A suggestion, possibly.
Sure. A friendly amendment to us.
Section 1.5 of PZR 2017-8A indicates that the application conforms with the applicable requirements of 1502040 and 1502050J5, which is the strict, strict variance standard. What I would suggest, Commissioner Pollan, is possibly you would want to strike section 1.5 as drafted and supplement the language that you just suggested in its stead.
The reason being?
That it doesn't, I can't support this proposal as qualifying for a strict variance, but it does qualify under the standard that he just cited.
Commissioner Pollan.
I guess the question to our, to Dan, would be how we should go about doing this so that we do this correctly with the proper, proper way that we have stated our opinions of why we are approving this variance.
Chair Shernick, Commissioner Pollan, I think there are many ways to do this correctly. I think that the way that Commissioner Height just brought up works just fine. So striking section 1.5 of PZR 2017-8A and replacing it by saying that the commission makes a determination under 11B, you know, with the full section number in there, that, the blah, 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 that, that is a fine way to do it.
So moved.
So, okay, I could, I could say it better.
Well, I mean, Jane, do you have enough of that to get it properly? Okay.
And I think, does everybody agree with, understand?
Understand what that is? Okay, but Commissioner Pollan, rather than so moved, would you accept that as a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioner Pollan has amended his motion. Do we have a second, Commissioner Pollan's motion?
With a second.
With, with that friendly amendment. And Commissioner Bruno, you seconded that. That's a yes. Okay, so any further discussion? Nope, let's take a vote.
Nope, what?
Whoa, whoa, oh!
I just, I just wanted to go on record for stating-
Okay, we will postpone Commissioner Goldberg's vote.
There was discussion, wasn't there?
Sorry, I didn't see you, I didn't see your thing.
I was just going to say that I appreciate the applicant bringing this project to this part of town. I appreciate the design that has been presented to us, regardless of how tricky it is to get it properly approved here before us. I think the majority of us are all in agreement that it looks good, and it's a good fit for the area. I am not so sold that this is the choice of the metal was to make for quick repair for the frequent accidents that will occur onto your vehicle. Maybe with kind of contractor vehicles with trailers and ladders and things, there's more, it's more likely to happen. But I'm more in favor of this because of the reasons that our fellow, that my fellow commissioners have outlined. It looks good, it's functional, it's sustainable, we have a good reason to justify it in our code. So thank you, and welcome to town if this gets approved. You're welcome, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Goldberg, for your comments, thank you for your vote. That passes seven to zero, so that is approved. Sorry about that, I do apologize. This item now enters a seven-day appeal period. During this time, any aggrieved party may appeal to commission's decision by submitting a written appeal. a written appeal letter stating why the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision should be amended or reversed by city council. All appeals must be in writing and must be received in the city clerk's office and the planning office within the seven-day appeal period, which begins Thursday, January 26 at 8:00 a.m. and ends Wednesday, February 1st at 5:00 p.m. Mr. Mondello, thank you again for your presentation, for your application. Ben, thank you very much for presenting twice tonight, and we will move on with the rest of our agenda.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate it. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, next is the final call for the public invited to be heard. Nobody signed up, right, Jane? Anybody in the audience want to come forward? Seeing no one, we will close the public invited to be heard. Any items from the commission? Seeing none, we will move to items from Council Representative Bonnie Finley. Nothing? Okay. Items from Principal Planner Don Burchett.
So I left before probably everybody walked out of the pre-session, so it looks like, well, did Joni mention then two meetings next month?
Possibly two meetings next month, yeah.
So the 15th would have a development application on that. It's probably the only item on that meeting. And then the items on the 22nd would be a rezoning and then land development code amendments. So that's what it's looking like right now. And so we'll probably send out an email to see who all can attend and all the stuff that Jane usually takes care of us for.
Okay.
So just wanted to let you know that. And then, as Brian talked about, based on the schedule, there might be a need as we try to keep your meetings shorter than the last meeting, that we may need additional meetings besides just the regular meeting if we have land development applications that we think are going to run into time constraints based on the items that Brian will be covering with the land development code. So we want to make sure we give you guys adequate time to review everything that's on your agenda without having to stay past the 11 o'clock timeline. So that's all that I have.
Great. Thank you, Don. Last item on our agenda is adjournment, which we will do unless somebody's opposed. All right, we are adjourned.